Go to DSDAR. Is there any questions to staff on DSDAR?
Right now.
No? All right.
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes.
In our discussions, is the Chamber of, soon-to-be former Chamber of Commerce building in play? Is that part of our discussion?
Yes, it is. In fact, counsel, we would really like to have some direction about what you see as the former fate of that building, or what your preference may be.
All right, so we'll start, no blue cards on this. Okay, we'll start with comments of, oh wait, man, I've got a blue card here. Okay. Oh, sorry, Larry, I'm gonna call you right now. Sorry. If anybody wants to talk about the DSDAR Park, this is the time to do it right now, before we start, or the fire station, before we start our discussion. Please, Larry, proceed.
My name is Larry Wolf, and I just had a few questions. I'm kind of new to this, so sorry. I know that from reading, it's been going on for a long time about the fire station, but is the city, I know at one time they were in negotiations with the Catholic Church, but that fell apart, and there's been various people, private entities that were interested, is the city still open to a private entity coming in and developing something that would preserve some of the life and beauty of that old station, but reuse it in a way that's like coffee shop, or not necessarily a full restaurant, but a casual dining kind of situation? And if so, there might be other things that would, obviously you've looked at, would be required, like cutting a road or connection through the park to connect to the parking lot. So, that's my question is, or has that been closed, and now the city is going to develop it themselves?
Well, you want me to answer that? Go ahead. I'll start, and let Dave. We've been talking about this for actually years and years and years. We did, we thought about a restaurant, we went through several restaurant potentials, and none of them came to fruition there. We had, we had obviously opened up negotiations with the Catholic Church there, and unfortunately, you know, that has not worked out, but there's been several other interested parties that has just not financially and/or feasibility, whatever it is, has not worked down there. So, we're kind of where we are with that. It's had a long history and a lot of negotiation. We spent a lot of money actually trying to get a usage there. I'm gonna ask our city manager if he'd like to add anything else to my discussion there, but the short answer is, we've looked for many, many, many years on potential uses.
The building is, you know, I spoke about the poor condition of the courthouse. The fire station is much worse, portions of which, if you stand inside the building, you can see daylight from the outside. Seismically, it's, you don't want to be there in an earthquake, let me tell you that. So, we've done a full investigation of the building. What the mayor was alluding to in terms of the feasibility is that the cost to reconstruct the building and make it usable far outweighs, you know, what can be gained economically from the building. The last group to look at it was the County Firefighters Union, and they quickly looked at it and then passed on the opportunity, decided to spend their money elsewhere. The last direction that counsel, staff has from counsel is to move towards demolishing the building. We're working on the California Environmental Quality Act review of that building to move in that regard.
And the other thing is that parking's a killer. There's just no parking on site. There's a little bit over where the gas, the fuel tanks were in the back, but not nearly enough. And there has to be a road to get there, so it has to go through the park, because there's not enough on the east side of the property enough. It's not wide enough, just for a very thin, narrow, one-lane road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address, before we begin a deliberation, sir?
Yeah.
Please. Come on up, if you've come up to the podium, I appreciate it.
Again, Mayor, I'm Phyllis Anderson. Are you not talking about the L-shaped, the original, the original City Hall and the library, that little adobe-looking things that are like square to the, to the fire station?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
The whole thing? No.
The whole thing.
Oh, that's not nice. I could see tearing down that station, but those are original buildings. That was our original buildings here. I just can't believe there's not some way to, even if it's just a facade, and it's the focal point of that park, that this is original Old Town, even if it looks like it's boarded up. It, to me, it's just, it's not right. Thank you.
Okay.
Joe wants to.
Joe? We have one more. Yeah, you can be right there, Joe, that's great.
Joe Ortiz, 1638 Edmond Drive. I've been on, well, I was on one of these committees, and most of you know me, I've been lifelong residence of Camrio, so as far as DSDAR Park, a couple of things, and those people who were mentioned about another alternative plan, we've gone through alternative plans for years and years and years. My humble suggestion is you raise the whole thing, expand the park, but I don't, I want you to remember one thing, you did work with St. Mary Magdalene Parish. I think there's a possibility you could, if you expand the park area, the grass area, perhaps a joint use agreement of some sort, or that's the term I'm supposed to use, to use the park area, it's all grass, for the playground area at St. Mary Magdalene School. I didn't even hear St. Mary Magdalene mentioned in the report by the architect, so I think that could be considered. City of Oxnard does it, City of Ventura does it, where they have a park, a suggestion to a school, and the school and the city are able to use that part of the property for, just during school time. I don't know how that works legally, you know, there's a liability and all that kinds of stuff, but that's something you folks would have to work out. But I don't want you to lose sight of that, I'm just gonna make that point. But as far as the buildings, we've gone too far. It's a community center, by the way, it's not just the firehouse, it was the community center, and that's what it was known as, and it's only, what, 70, I would say only 75 years old, 77 years old, and it's time for it to go, and I think you have an opportunity to really expand on its use, and maybe work jointly with the parish, with the St. Mary Magdalene School to make use of it. So, I just wanna put that thought in your minds to consider. Thank you.
Got a question, Joe, before you go. So, you're talking about the fire station and the buildings right next to the fire station, you're not talking about what, right now, is the Chamber of Commerce building?
Tearing it down, too.
If I had my, I'd take everything, the way it used to be, it was a park, but just, obviously, it was just the firehouse, community center, and library at that time, but I'm talking about just where the firehouse is located now, what you wanted with the community commerce, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce building, I mean, that's, I don't know, I thought that was, I thought it was gonna stay. But as far as the east end of the property is adjacent to the St. Mary Magdalene School playfield, the playground, they could expand or use it for their, some activities during school time, during the school year, and, you know, maybe you could, maybe two parts would be, be able to benefit from it, the city and the public, and the school. Something to think about.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address on DSDAR and the fire station? Okay, so with that, staff, do you have anything you'd like to include before we start our deliberations on that?
No.
Okay, so we'll start our deliberations on this. So, who would like to start off?
Sean's got his hand up.
Sean, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll lead this, this time. I'll try to be more brief than I was on the courthouse. I do think we have a great opportunity to really enhance a public space with DSDAR. I do support raising the former fire station. I think doing anything with that building, as much as I like it, I like passing through it. Nine years ago, I desperately wanted to convert, I wrote a big old blog post and shared it with a few council members or staff at that point, and, back in 2010, I desperately wanted to convert that into a co-working space and turn the garage into a cafe that could come out onto the driveway, and I thought that was really great. And then I got hit with, even back then, the numbers, and I couldn't figure out how that would pencil out financially. Everyone who has entertained that from a, from a commercial aspect, has not been able to pencil that out, and particularly if you're looking at it for a restaurant, when it comes to, I mean, it'd be cheaper just to knock the building down and build a new building, than try to rehab that building into a restaurant space, or a cafe, or anything of the sort. But I am in favor of raising that building, enhancing the passive park space. I like certain elements of the 2012 redesign plan. I don't think it needs to be that opulent. I do like the idea of passive parking in the rear, adjacent to St. Mary Magdalene's, is it basketball courts, adjacent to their basketball courts. The mention of St. Mary Magdalene, they could definitely, it would be a public park, they can, there's certainly liability, and, you know, I don't think we're gonna fence off the area, I think they would need a fenced-off area, just for liability purposes, I know, that would, that would limit the public's use of that, I don't think that's an option. But when it comes to parking and/or, you know, overflow parking from St. Mary Magdalene, or the businesses, and/or the schools, whatever use of that property, as they want to, it's a public space, they can, you know, outside of a major congregation, which they might need a permit for, they're free to use that space as they see fit, I presume. But I definitely, I think there's opportunities to enhance the programmability, the programming opportunity of that space. I like the food truck suggestion that with that passive parking in the back, we could, we could have programming in that park, and they could bring a few food trucks in. There's more opportunity to bring people down. The, I too have concerns about the lighting and the security of it, I think that would, I think that we should enhance that. Public art is, I'm supporter of public art, and possibly, and I didn't say this in the courthouse, but I think there's still an opportunity there in, in working with Studio Channel Islands for potential public art, I think that would be great. In terms of the chamber building, I am not in favor of knocking that down. As far, unless staff can tell me otherwise, that seems to be a fine building. It's standing, I don't know if there are any structural or significant maintenance issues or foundation issues with it, but absent those, I think, why knock down a perfectly good building, which could be occupied by an additional business, who will bring more people to downtown, which will help the economic vitality of Old Town, and the restaurants adjacent, across the street from it, which have historically always struggled. I don't see how just an additional little patch of grass there on the corner, although it may enhance the visibility in the entrance to that park, I don't see how that enhances the economic vitality of Old Town. You know, I personally have been asked numerous questions from a lot of different business owners as to the availability of that space, since the chamber has said they're looking to vacate, I'm sure that the city staff has possibly been inbound on several requests as well. I've been, I've been inbound at least three, two private businesses, one expressing interest in possibly converting it to a co-working space, and that, you know, that would bring a whole different set of, different groups of people down there, younger, maybe not younger, but potentially younger, but, you know, more bodies down there to Old Town.
You're not gonna discriminate against us old folks.
I will not discriminate against, as long as you don't discriminate against us young folks. But I, you know, whatever it might be, and I don't necessarily want to rule out any potential use, whether it's just a business that can fill that space with bodies and commerce, or, I personally like the idea of a co-working space, not one that is owned or operated by the city, but if a private operator wants to come in there and they see, you know, an opportunity for that, I think that could actually, could be viable. I went and did the math on it to see if it was viable, and my numbers came out as somewhat favorable for that, if there were a suitor. I think that would go hand-in-hand with some of our economic development strategy as well. That is, is more or less all I have in regards to that. I think we can make some improvements. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to make this gold-plated, I don't want to spend more money than we necessarily need to, but there's definitely enhancements that we can, that can be made to enhance that public space, and particularly for the adjacent communities, I think that's, it's, it's an underutilized park now, and I think we can definitely make some improvements.
Just a brief follow-up, and I'd appreciate it if all the council members would weigh in on the bandstand concept, which was part of the 2012 plan, and something we anticipated bringing forward, but I'd like to see what the council would like staff to consider in that regard, please.
Yeah, I'll give some input on, I'm personally torn on the bandstand idea. I see, I definitely see its potential use for Camrio Fiesta. I know that the future of Camrio Fiesta is somewhat in the air, as was kind of conveyed from the speaker last council session, and so I don't, I don't, I don't know what the future is of Fiesta, I don't necessarily want to go all in, in providing something that'll, it'll be, if it's just for their, just for Fiesta's use, and it's not really gonna be utilized outside of that, then I'm not particularly in favor of that. I know some community groups have expressed interest in potentially offering financial support. In that case, I'm more than, I'd be more than happy of continuing to engage and see if there's enough community interest, and that truly can be, you know, programmable space outside of just once annually for the Fiesta, then I see opportunity for the bandstand idea. I just, I, I don't have a good pulse on whether or not it'll be used very much, or if it's just going to be a really expensive sitting area for 364 days out of the year.
Your honor.
Yes, Ms. Graydon, can you finish on?
Yeah, thank you.
I joined Mr. Mulchay in thinking we're going to have to raise the fire station, that was my thought for a long time. It's been quite a while since I first toured it, and then I toured it another time, and both times I got horrible asthma attacks, and it isn't a personal asthma thing, I just realized it was going to be a lot more expensive to make that into anything usable by the public than it would be to tear it down and start again. So, I think we're going to have to do that. I do think that if there's any way possible, I keep thinking back, I would like to save something from some of this stuff, and if there's any way to save something from the tower, I've been thinking of the story about, one time, I think they came out of mass at St. Mary Magdalene Chapel, or they came out of something, and saw the copper, what's it called? Help me.
Copper bell?
The what?
Bell tower?
The cupola, in a dumpster, and Katie would not allow it to be picked up, so she stood there and guarded that thing, and called and called, and they got somebody to take it out to the ranch, and they put out a, a lot of pleas, and people donated money. In fact, Bud Daley paid almost all of the cost of the gazebo out there, and the structure, and to put it on there, and that's how that, that got there. So, I keep thinking, maybe there's something, somehow, we could, from the tower or something, that we could save, and then have it incorporated into the park, and have a theme, we'd already talked about in that previous plan, about having a totlot expanded, and having, and it would have a fire truck theme. And I think that that would be wonderful, too. I disagree with Mr. Mulchay on the chamber building, I think it should, too should go. I think this would open up the view of it, of the park, and it would let more people see it, they could find it, they wouldn't drive past it and then try to figure out how to turn around and come back, and you can't turn in there. And so, I just think it would open it up and maybe make it a little safer, along with enhanced lighting. But at the chamber, the one thing I really like are the memorial, they have memorial pillars, and they have all of the bricks at the bottom, and a lot of people paid a lot of money to, to enhance that corner, and maybe we could save that by making a, an arcade or something with those pillars, or manufacture new pillars with the same wording on them, because they were dedicated to people, and have that as the corner piece in one of the entries to the park. I do think the totlot should be expanded somewhat. I, as I said, I like the, and I, I know, I talked a lot to people at the Historical Society on Sunday about how that was, started as a community center. It, yeah, it was a fire station, but it was really a community center. The library was there, and the county supervisor's office was there, and all of that stuff was there. But I think that the thing that most people think of when they drive by it today is the fire station, so I'd like, I think a fire station theme there, if we can, and I'm sure architects could pull it off. I'd like to see more picnic tables, and I do think the bandstand, the band gazebo, whatever you'd call it, is appropriate. It isn't just the Fiesta that's used that, I don't know if it still goes, but there used to be a Bluegrass Festival there once a year. There have been other types of music festivals there, and I'm sure that they could, there's still the Bluegrass Organization in the county. I think if it were bigger, and if there were a bandstand with sound and everything, that they'd love to come back. I think it could also be used by other musical groups for concerts that aren't quite as big as what would be here. Let's see, what do I have? I do not support any kind of active recreation that would require it to be staffed. I don't want us to be in the checking-out equipment business, none of that stuff. If, it can, it's going to be bigger because of the fire station area, it can have playgrounds, but just open areas like behind, in my mind, behind the community center, where there are large grass areas and people come and utilize it. I do not support a splash pad, and I want to tell you why. At the, when the Rec and Park District had their scoping meeting for the senior center, community center, all-purpose center, for all ages meeting, somebody specifically asked about a splash pad and how much they cost. They said, the answer from the architect was that they cost a half a million and up to build them, and they're extremely expensive to maintain, and that's more than I want to put into it for, you know, really, if you look at it, it's not all that many days in the summer that they're usable, because when it's cold and when it's windy, they don't operate, and nobody goes to them. So, those are my thoughts on the DSDAR Park, and I think I got down everything you asked. Okay.
Ms. Tangio?
Ask us to address.
I too liked the previous plan, minus the big turnaround for the parking and the added alley driveway. I agree that I don't think the chamber building should remain. I think it's in the way. I love the co-working idea, just not there. My idea, I've always thought that a way to honor the old buildings was, was twofold. To either use a part of it, like you were, you were talking about, or some sort of facade or silhouette from the front building that's closest to Ventura Boulevard. I would love to see something that, you know, when you get off the Lewis Road off-ramp, you know, you basically are staring right at it, but something welcoming you to Old Town, and maybe there can be something done with, with parts of the building, or the silhouette of the building, or something that resembles it that's safe in an earthquake. I had also thought about the idea about a memorial to firefighters, given our community. I don't, so I don't know if that can also be worked into also honoring the bricks and all the other things that are, that are there, that I really do think should be kept and worked into, whatever we design. I, I also agree with expanding the totlot, and I love the whole firefighter theme. I do think we should have a bandstand. I, I remember when my kids were in middle school, we had to have concerts in the parking lot of Coffee Bean. So, things like that would be a perfect place to have very informal performances for things like that. More tables, and the lighting, yes, thank you. I think that covers my list.
Okay, well, let me make a couple of, of comments here. I'm gonna start with the Chamber of Commerce building, and I personally would like to see if there's a usage for that building before we demolish it. And I'll tell you why, because I think that, that building does have some value to it. I always like to exercise our due diligence, just to see if there's not another usage of something before it has to be torn down. However, if it does have to be torn down, I like the idea of keeping the pillars there and doing something of that nature there. I think that would be, I think they look really good, and it's kind of inviting. I understand the aesthetics as far as it does block the park, and it definitely does that, but if we're able to expand the park, that visual is gonna be somewhat longer, so I think they'll be able to see more of a park than they can now. As far as the fire station, I think, you know, I made some comments that, you know, we've tried and tried and tried to find usage, we've been unsuccessful in that. I think that we should strongly consider tearing that down. However, there is part of that building, which I believe used to be the first library in town, and I'm thinking if there's a way that we might be able to save that part of the building, I don't know the earthquake retro of that, or whether or not it's even feasible, but I'm thinking that could be opened up as a historical part of our library system, and perhaps people can go over there and look at some of the early Camrio history there, for some books and things of that nature. It's not a real big building. I've been in there probably about five years ago, I know it's not in good shape, I don't know if it's even feasible to save that, but if we can, I think I'd like, like for us to at least look at the potential possibility of that, and if not, perhaps we can use that part of as a replica of firefighters, perhaps a plaque of, I believe it was Mike DSDAR who actually bequeathed the park to the city, well, weren't a city in that team, but I think he actually, it was his property, and he donated, I think to the then-county, if I'm not mistaken, to the...
He owned a hardware, and he paid to have the bodies removed from the cemetery that belonged to Pleasant Valley Baptist Church.
Right.
Over to Ivy Lawn.
That's right, it used to be a cemetery.
So, he didn't give it.
Right.
He did the work.
I know that, and near and dear to me, because my mom actually worked there. So, yes, there, but if we could do some sort of an acknowledgement of the history of there through, you know, a plaque, or maybe some sort of acknowledgement of the history there, and I think that would be, that would be something we might have to look, look into. I don't know about the usage with other neighbors there, I don't know what, that's, I think, that's an attorney question, as far as... I don't know what, that's, I think, that's an attorney question, as far as how we can use that with the neighbors that are there right now. I'm specifically mentioning the Catholic Church, because it was brought up to that. I don't know how, you know, that would work or not, but I'm certainly open-minded to anything. But I think right now, I'd like to see if there's other usage of the Chamber of Commerce building. I'd like to see the fire station torn down and the park expanded, and I'd like to see if there's some way that we could keep that replica of the original library there some way.
Kevin?
The bandstand, I, I think the bandstand, I do like the bandstand idea, but I would like to see it in a replica of the fire station, if we could, yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure that I understood what you said. Obviously Joe did, but the, the, the fire station was built, and then connected to it was another building that had several, several uses in it.
Right.
One of them being the library. So, and that's on the east side. So, did, were you saying you want that building, the single-story building on the east side, preserved?
If it, the fire station would go down, fire station, and then that L shape, those would all be torn out, too. It's just that one that's specifically on the corner there, to see if that can be preserved.
On the front corner, the back corner?
The front corner.
The front corner.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just some clarification. You said you wanted the, the bandstand as a replica of the, of the fire station?
Well, if we could, you know, if you could make it look like what that fire station used to, like, I know, like, the hardware and whatnot that you put up there, I'm assuming there's going to be an awning that's going to be there?
Oh, I see.
That type of thing, and make it kind of a replicate of what the fire station looked I know this a lot. But you asked for suggestions. All right, so Sean, do you have anything?
Yeah, it just dawned on me, when you brought up the fact that it used to be an old cemetery, because I keep getting inbound on, on, on all these questions, are all the bodies gone? And I know back in 2000, was it 2009?
We had people go through with meters, and they found no signs of bones.
Yeah, they went through, they used ground-penetrating sonar, and they, they verified that there were no bodies buried six feet under there, right?
Well, there are no bodies buried in the part that could be sonarred.
That's right.
What we don't know is what's underneath the chamber building.
Right.
If anything.
There's a rumor that four graves were not moved.
Wasn't there, my understanding, too, there was a couple of them that were never really identified. In other words, there were some records that they were never able to really find.
I thought they just couldn't find relatives to sign off on them.
Yeah, and that could very well be true.
But they may have been moved, or may not have been moved, they, they didn't know. But there's a rumor that there were four, but they, they weren't in the park, but they might be under the chamber building, which was built later.
Okay.
Well, there you go. So, just for... Joe, maybe you'll have some comment about Sequin Archaeological Resources, and what needs to happen in a situation where there, there is a question about that when you're demolishing it.
Yeah, we would definitely analyze that when we do the initial study, to see if we have to dive deeper into that through the Sequa process. So that's correct. City manager's absolutely right, we'll have to analyze that as part of our preliminary initial study for Sequa. But I also wanted to see if we could get a little more information from the council. I know Councilmember Craven indicated that a splash pad would be inappropriate at Disdar, and I think that would probably apply to the courthouse property as well, based on her comments. But I'd like clarification on that, and I'd like input from the council as to whether or not there's support for a splash pad at one or the other property, or not at all.
Well, just to clarify, I, I can only support picnic tables and benches and grass at the courthouse, so anything else, I'm not supporting.
I'd like more information about the cost. There, I still hear quite a few community members in support of a splash pad, so I, I'd like to at least have more information about cost.
Do you have preference on where, which side?
Yeah.
Counsel, in, in terms of practicality and use of the future spaces, you know, if council wants to go for a splash pad somewhere, staff's recommendation would be at the courthouse site. And the reason is, is because the Disdar site, especially if you're going to continue to use it for, for musical performances, festival, and the like, there's just not going to be enough room on the Disdar site. Plus, the Disdar site has a lot of trees, and the last thing you want is a lot of tree debris at your, at your splash pad. In fact, Tully could keep us entertained for the next three hours on splash pads, because he's got a lot of experience about what they had to deal with in Ventura. I'm not asking him to speak right now, because I would like to go home tonight. But my recommendation is, is if you're looking at a splash pad, try to work it into the, into the courthouse site. Plus, you know, if you're, if you're looking at activating that area, and you want to bring people to that area, the splash pad would be bringing children and their parents, you know, into the heart of Old Town. So please keep that in mind.
So we're not anticipating that we're going to plant trees with these benches and tables at the courthouse site?
Yes, we would, but recognize that the density of the foliage at Disdar and the general shadiness of the site is just not conducive to a splash pad.
The corner where the, where the chamber building is might be.
Yeah, and you can convince the rest of your council members that that might be a good idea. Although, I could, I could not honestly support a splash pad on a busy corner like Ventura Boulevard and Glen. And that just is not conducive to child safety.
In order to provide my input on, on splash pad, I, I wouldn't mind seeing the numbers. I've done some of my own research. I have, I have some concerns in regards to financing it, and how much it would cost. And I've looked at numbers in the range of $500, $800,000 for capital, infrastructure, and then tens, tens of thousands, if not high, mid-tens of thousands of dollars a year in potential maintenance, or, and/or as it, as it ages. I know the water can be recycled, but also means it has, there has to be an onsite filtering, you know, facility, and then I also know that there's, there's a lot of power that may come with that as well. And as seen that energy costs are only going up, that's something to keep in consideration, or, you know, in the back of our heads as well. So I have, I have no, I don't necessarily want to just, just discount it out of hand, but I, you show me the numbers, I'm more welcome to look at the numbers, if we have some. I'm more happy to sit down with Tully for three hours and, and get his dissertation on splash pads. But I have, I, I definitely have some, some significant concerns in regards to that.
Yeah, I'm, you know, not necessarily opposed to splash pads, or in favor of them, but my personal view is that these two locations are not the best locations for that. And then as you talk about, you know, the numbers and the, the cost of these, I think that really needs to take a hard look. So my, my feeling is, is that the two locations that we're, you know, discussing tonight, I feel that are not the best and wisest use for a splash pad. All right, staff, do you need any more direction?
No, I think this has been great. We really appreciate all the input.
Okay, so suggested action was to provide input. Did you get enough input?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.